Welcome to our, uh...
Flag moving.
Interesting, uh, we're moving flags tonight, so...
Flag moving ceremony, yes.
Well, one more sleep and the election's over. We're all ready for that.
Absolutely.
I think we are all ready for that, so... Uh, with that, let's move forward. Uh, Nate, will you call role, please?
Uh, Councilmember Schultz is absent. Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
And Mayor Winchell?
Here. Uh, just a reminder, Councilmember Row is... has resigned, so that position is open, and Councilmember Schultz is unavailable tonight. So, uh, with that, we'll move to item number four, adopting the agenda. Is there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, an entertaining motion.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to, uh, adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into visitor presentation. Um, is there anyone here from the Veterans Group?
Where are they?
Well, I... I am not seeing anyone. I have a proclamation for the dedication of Veterans Day. Do you think I should still read it?
No.
It's gonna be on this Sunday, too, so...
Yep.
Right, yeah.
Um, so, so, um, for... for anybody that hasn't heard it, uh, this Sunday, which is actually Veterans Day, at two o'clock in the afternoon, we're gonna do a dedication of the new Veterans Park, which is across from the VFW, across, uh, the Creek Road, and then across the pond from Fireman's Park. Um, so, and so, we have a proclamation that we're gonna read there, and I'm gonna read it here. Um, and the proclamation reads, "In recognition of dedication of Veterans Park, whereas the Veterans Park will be dedicated on Sunday, November 11th, at 2018, at two o'clock in the afternoon. Whereas a ceremony planned by the American Legion Post 57 and the Walter Heckland Veterans of Foreign War Post 1791, Carver County Veteran Services, and the City of Chaska will memorialize this occasion. Whereas the celebration will also honor all of those who served and those who have served in the United States Armed Forces in accordance with tradition of the national holiday of Veterans Day. Whereas this Veterans Day commemorates the hundredth year anniversary of Armistice Day, which brought an end to the hostiles between the Allied Forces and Germany in World War I." Hostilities, I'm sorry. "Whereas Veterans Park was developed in a way that would formally recognize veterans in our community, whether they be at home or abroad, or pro... and provide a unique gathering place for the community. Whereas the park expounds upon the spirit of service through a plaza featuring a center star and meaning... meaningful quotes, monuments to the different branches of the United States Armed Forces, and a memorial grove of trees. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Winchell, Mayor of the City of Chaska, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Chaska, to hereby declare Sunday, November 11th, 2018, the official dedication of the Veterans Park. In witness hereof, I hereon do set my hand in the seal of the City of Chaska this fifth day of November in the year of our Lord 2018." So, um, I hope that everyone, uh, will have the ability to come over there. That park is amazing, what's been done, and the things that are in there. There's a lot of little things that you really have to spend time and walk around to see. Unfortunately, the weather's probably not gonna be the warmest on that day. I just saw the high of 25, but I'm hoping our weather-
I think it's supposed to be dry, though.
It's gonna be dry, and the sun's gonna be out. So, I think that will really make things a little more interesting, and, um, um, hopefully, like I said, that it, um, you know, it'll keep us... it'll keep the long speeches short, that's for sure. Um, but I think, I... I really hope that you get a chance to get over there because it is really a beautiful, um, memorial to all of our, uh, veterans, and they were supposed to be a group here. I don't know if they got delayed or something. Um, anyways, so, with that, um, council, I don't know if you had any comments or not, or if not, I know tomorrow there's a walkthrough tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
Oh, is there?
And they invited anyone that can be there. I cannot be there at 10 o'clock.
I think I can.
So, um, they're just gonna walk through and kinda look and see if there's anything they're missing or whatever.
It's absolutely beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm so excited about it.
Me, too. And as part of it, too, the improved archery range.
Is that, oh-
Are we gonna be scheduling that through Parks and Rec?
Is that open?
Yes, so that, that actually, um, that's for open use, and so that'll just be open for people to use. You just go in and use it.
But it is open now, or?
It, uh-
Is it ready?
Well, I was there last... the end of last week, and it wasn't ready.
I thought there was a railing missing on top.
Yeah, there was... there was still something missing on the top, but the, uh, park shelter, which is expanded, does get reserved through... you actually can do it on our webpage, uh, through our Park and Rec, uh, section of our webpage.
Okay.
Very good.
Sweet.
Thank you.
All right. So, I didn't see anybody come in that would be part of that. So, all right, with that, uh, the next person that I have on visitor presentation is Linda Hoffman, Animal Control Discussion. Linda here?
So, some of you may know me. I'm Linda Hoffman. I'm the lost found cat volunteer for Carver and Scott County. I'm also known as the Chaska Cat Lady, lovingly. I am here to present valid proof to you that reflects the importance and need for a contract to provide animal control for found cats in Chaska. Right now, there's nowhere for found cats to go, and the finders scramble to find friends or family members to take them so they are safely off the street. It would be very helpful if there was a place for the found cats to be taken to right away. And I have the folders back there, but I have included two pages of accurate... actual occurrences in Chaska in regards to found pets, my proposal letter, the Chaska Herald petition letter that I wrote from the October 18th edition, information including financial numbers from the Animal Control Officer at Fort Paws of Shakopee, and the list of signed supporters for cat animal control. Uh, please take this very seriously and read all the information I have provided. I pray and hope that a contract can be implemented to start January 1st, 2019. And I do have folders to give all of you, for you to review. I felt that that would be the easiest way because it would be very... it would take a lot of time to, you know, read everything in this packet, but it's... as Matt will know, I have put together a lot of information, and I have done a lot of research, and, you know, Chaska already has the, um, contract with Fort Paws for dogs in Chaska. So, it would be very simple to add on cats to that contract. And I have all the figures here. And I... so, if it's okay, I'll go and grab all the folders, and can I give them to you personally?
Yep.
I had one for Councilmember Schultz, and he's-
You can leave that here, and we'll put it in his file.
As Linda gets that, uh, what I'll do is I'll put together a memo to bring back to you guys. Uh, Linda's done a great deal amount of work, uh, and we've met a few times to look over at the history of why we don't have a, uh, contract for cats, and a lot of cities don't, is 'cause with dogs, you know, there's an offsetting revenue that typically goes with the impounding of dogs because most owners will come-
Thank you, Linda. Nice to meet you.
And recover their pets, and so they're required to actually pay that fee when they get it. A lot of the cats don't have owners associated with them, so it's a straight cost to the city. Um, Linda's gathered some, uh, information together, so what I can do is I'll put it together in a memo and bring it back to either the 19th or the, uh, first meeting in December, so prior to us establishing the budget, so that you guys can have a chance to look at it and make an determination if that's the direction you wanna go. But I can put all that... that information together.
Okay.
And I'll share that with you, too, Linda.
Yeah, but like I said, you know, it's a very big need, almost once or twice a week. I have found a cat, what can I do? And it comes down to where, you know, I don't know. The Humane Society has like a three-week period, waiting period up in Golden Valley. And, you know, that Carver Scott's, since they've been straight, um, 'cause at Valley Care Vet, now everything has to go through their rescue. You know, we can't, just can't bring in cats there, and, you know, as you well know from some of the posts on real life in Chaska, how passionate I am, and there's some sad stories in there. The one from a year ago where lady found a cat, and there was nowhere to bring it. She had to let it back out, and it was found deceased a few days later. And I'm trying to prevent that from happening, obviously, prevent happening from having more dead cats on the road in Chaska. There's just been way too many in the last almost two months, 10 of them. And, you know, just all around saving the cats' lives, and, you know, just have something like what Fort Paws has for Shakopee, Savage, and Pirate Lake. And there, I've been in contact with Scott, the main animal control officer, and he's all for this, too, and Matt's been wonderful support and listening to all the needs and the importance-
Have you been able-
Nikki was gonna come here and make it, but she's the loss. She volunteers with, um, a dog search. I'm so nervous right now, I can't even think of it.
The retrievers, isn't it the retrievers?
Thank you. And she called me about 6:30. Um, I may be there about 7:20 because we just found a dog, and we found the owners, and we've gotta get the dog to them. You know, that's how crazy.
Have you been able to determine in the cats that have been picked up, um, how many are feral and how many are pets?
You know, none of them we have-
Like a percentage?
...been told about have been feral. You know, those, they get... if we hear of any that are feral, most of them that I've been notified about are very tame. The ones that are feral, we set live chats for, bring them up to Humane Society, get them fixed on the Community Cats Program, and release back where they found them, because it's very important to have them brought back to the area they're used to. I know a lot of people are not happy because they kill the birds and everything, but if you put them in a different area where they're not used to, increases the chances of them being hit by cars. So, and there is feral cats here that do need to be caught and fixed to control the pet population.
Yes.
That's a... that's the next thing to work on. They have... my live chats have been lent out to everybody all over Chaska. If I went, picked up more for me from the Humane Society today. So, and for the found cats, though, they're all very tame, and unfortunately, none of them have had microchips.
That's bad.
So, it makes it hard to find the families. We've had some success just based on posting them out on social media, on Craigslist, and the Humane Society, and Nextdoor. But, you know, if we can go find the owners, first of all, get them off the street, find their families, then it's all worthwhile. If not, like Fort Paws, they reach out to rescues, saying their stray hold is up, which usually is five days. They sometimes keep it longer, and then they find rescues. They do not do adoptions there through Fort Paws, but with the rescues, you're sure they'll get the full vet exam, shots, and fixed. And it was just all about, okay, fine cat, we don't wanna let it back out, especially now that it's getting colder out, or anytime with the coyotes and the raccoons around, and, I mean, they're everywhere, so...
They're everywhere.
There are still some missing cats in Chaska that will probably never be found, and that's probably what happened to them, unfortunately, but... do you have any other questions?
I don't think so. I mean, we'll wait till we get that report from Matt, and we can kinda take it from that.
And you're gonna find... I'm a very thorough person, as you can tell, from there, and organized, and my email's on there, phone number. A lot of you know how to get hold of me, my Facebook. I've talked with Paula on the phone. So, thank you for your time. I really-
Nice to meet you in person, finally.
Linda, thanks for all you do. So, you do a lot of work, I know.
I saw your comment today. It was like, since I was having a very frustrating day with the customers at MyPillow, so the reason I said that was very helpful. But I, hopefully, we can come up to some kind of a solution so they can keep safe, because people wanna help the cats. They wanna keep them safe. And you'll have a lot of cat lovers in here, and animal lovers overall, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts.
So, you'll get something back to us, is how we'll-
Yep. Yeah, no, uh, Linda's done a lot of gathering, a lot of information, so I can sort of, uh, put out to you, you know, what their ramifications would be and stuff like that, so...
All right, is there anyone else here under visitor presentation? Last call. Okay.
Do you guys have any visitor presentation?
No, we're Heartbreaker, uh-
Okay. Okay, just wanna make sure.
Sure, thank you.
We... we met the other day, then. Yeah, okay, all right. She's the one that told you they have pizza still.
Was there last night? I know, according to my notes, you're still there.
All right.
All right. Um, all right, we will move on. Item six, approving the previous meeting minutes. Uh, again, corrections or additions? If not, an entertaining motion to approve.
So, move.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to approve the, um, meeting minutes from the previous meeting on 10:15. Um, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into, um, consent, which is items that, uh, need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but we can if necessary. So, what's your thoughts?
Uh, I was just curious with the, uh, the new owners at Heartbreakers, will they continue to be working with Alliance Club for all of that?
Absolutely, yes.
Wonderful, okay, good, 'cause I know that's worked very well, I think, so...
For them and for us.
Wonderful, thank you.
You wanna just maybe, as long as we started a conversation with you, they just come on up to the microphone, 'cause they can't see you there?
Till we meet ya.
Introduce yourselves.
I'm Greg, and this is Rachel Anderson, my boss. Um, literally, and, um, I go to an abuse group. Um, no, just kidding. Um, no, we... we bought Heartbreakers. Uh, we've been looking for a business, and we looked at, I don't know, 100 different, uh, possibilities from, um, delivery routes to this and that, and we almost bought a place, a restaurant in Florida.
Wow.
Didn't work out. Uh, and this is about seven, eight miles from our house.
Oh, perfect.
Um, works great. The atmosphere there is about fun. It's not about, um, anything else, I guess. And, uh, it's... the people there seem to be on board and happy, uh, and so...
Good.
And the reason the owner sold it was because it's out of his realm. He lives in Wisconsin and has a bunch of businesses in Wisconsin, so it all added up, and it worked out for us. So, we hope to be good citizens and, uh-
Good.
-continue it as a fun place to be, so...
So, locally owned. How nice is that? Thank you.
Yeah. It's very popular, I know, and, you know...
We hope to make it more popular, but... but not mess with it too much because of what works, you don't wanna fix.
If they broke, don't fix it, yeah.
Yeah.
Welcome to the community, and-
Thank you. We grew up around here. I... I... I'm kind of Boras because I... I... I lived in Minnetoka, near Minnetoka, for all my life, and, uh, the... the thought of moving to Florida was-
Appealing.
Uh, appealing, sort of, and scary at the same time. So, anyway, here we are.
Maybe colder here, but no alligators. Nothing to worry about.
No alligators, no.
No mosquitoes and snakes.
Hurricanes.
Brown records.
Yes, exactly.
Well, very good. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, um, your thoughts, we just got the two items, so...
Yeah.
So, I got the answers I needed. Did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
All right, motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to approve the consent agenda items. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. You're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Moves us to item number eight, uh, Adopt Resolution 2018-135, Public Assessment Hearing. Adopt Resolution Approving the Imposition of Service Charges for the 2019 Chaska Downtown Special Services District.
All right, mayor and council members, thank you. Uh, this is a continuation of public hearing that we opened on, what was it, October 5th, um, the first meeting in October. Um, and this is a... this is an annual thing that we've been doing now for the last number of years since the Special Service District in downtown was created.
Three or four years, maybe?
I'm thinking three, but- This is at the top of my report. Let me pull it up to get the exact date for ya. 2014 was when it was established, yep. Um, so that... and that would have been for 2015 budget year, so this is the fourth year of-
Gotcha. Thank you.
-of budget that we're setting. Um, so, the... the city establishes the SSD, um, establishes the assessment through a public hearing, which is what we're holding tonight, and then contracts with the Chaska Downtown Business Alliance to manage the district. And, uh, they've... they've done a number of things over the years since SSD has been created to contribute to downtown, um, really with the... the goal of marketing downtown, supporting the businesses that are downtown, and drawing people, uh, to downtown to both patronize the businesses and also, uh, attend events and things like that. So, we're... we're trying to create activity and... and support the business environment through the SSD. Um, if we put together a budget, the budget total for this year, or for the... for the next budget year, um, would be the same as it was last year at $60,100, um, with $58,100 coming through the SSD and 2,000 coming through, uh, sponsorships and other in-kind type services. Um, so what that means as far as an assessment for the businesses is, uh, it'd be approximately, well, it would be, uh, rate of $1.09 per $1,000 of estimated market value, which is a 9.9% decrease from last year. So, even though the budget is the same, uh, property values have both increased and, uh, you know, a combination of commercial space potentially being added in locations downtown, um, that there's more of a tax base there, so that's the... that's why the rate ends up going down for the values. Um, so, for the average, uh, commercial building downtown, which is valued at $399,400, uh, the average, or the service charge for that average valued, uh, building would be $434 for the year. So, that's... that's what we're talking about tonight and what you all would be approving. Um, Dan Keport is in attendance. He's the president of, um, of the downtown SSD and the Chaska Downtown Business Alliance. Um, so, Dan, I don't know if you want anything to offer up. I think he's here to share, uh, both what's planned in the budget for next year and to reflect on accomplishments over the last couple of years, so...
While Dan's preparing that, I just want people that... out there that, uh, just to understand that the city's not doing this budget. This is a budget they've created.
That is correct.
And this... the reason that we're involved with it is we have to do the assessing for that. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah. The city by statute is... has the authority to... to do an assessment, um, and to create a special service district to support businesses, so...
But this was generated through the downtown business alliance to do this, to be able to make this happen, and so far, it sounds like, you know, everyone's been good about... I don't... I don't think we've really had any, um-
The businesses have basically asked to be assessed for it.
And, uh, I think we're seeing the benefits paying off, and I'll... I'll let you take off, Dan, from that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. This is a, um, you know, it's an assessment that we imposed on ourselves, really with the...
I love that.
...with the cooperation and the support of the city, and, um, I... I won't go into great detail, 'cause you've all seen this before, but I did wanna touch briefly on, you know, where the money goes and what we've been doing with it and what we plan to do with it in the year ahead, uh, just kind of at a high level. Um, and our... our administrator has written, I think, a terrific paragraph that kind of summarizes who we are, uh, so I'm just gonna read that. Um, if you'll bear with me on that. "The downtown Chaska Special Services District strives to share the knowledge of our amazing downtown while helping businesses strengthen their offerings to the community and provide enhancements to support the retention, growth, and recruitment of businesses, along with community knowledge and support. We aim to attract residents and visitors to downtown to patronize businesses and attend events, and promote... to promote and develop an attractive environment for business owners." That is what we're about, right there. I mean, it's... it's both for the business owners and for people to come down and support those businesses and to attract new businesses, so... Um, we've... we've divided our budget really into three main areas, and I'll talk briefly about those three. One is marketing, another is events, another is, um, business retention and recruitment. Uh, so I'll take each of those in turn. Briefly, in 2018 in marketing, uh, if you're on social media, you've seen us. We do a lot of social media, and we've doubled our reach on Facebook and... and doubled the number of likes that we have, and, um, and we've got blogs going, and so there's a lot of social media stuff going on. In addition to the social media, we sent out a mailer. I don't know if you probably all got one of these, you know, of upcoming events, and, uh, and I think that's the kind of thing that people will stick on their bulletin board or attach with a magnet to the refrigerator and have and use, and thereby go to these events. We also created a, uh, a Discover Downtown Chaska map. This is sitting at the, uh, service desk at the Curling Rink. And so, for people that are in from out of town, it's restaurants, churches-
Yep.
-retail, you know, that... with a map showing where everything is. It's a great piece, and thank you, Park and Rec, for being so supportive and keeping this on your front counter. That's fantastic cooperation. We love that.
Oh, he's zooming in, so he can lay that down, Dan, and he'll... he's zooming in on you. Okay.
All right, look at that.
There's that.
What a great tool for visitors coming in.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, um, so that's a piece we did this year-
And Dan, just sorry to interrupt, but this is an item that has been included in the giveaway bags that, um, Bonspiel attendees-
Oh, excellent.
So, when people come into town, now you know where the churches are, you know where the restaurants are, you know where the stores are.
Yeah.
We... we also, we wanna kind of take this to the next level, and the next level is one that really includes all the businesses. You won't see insurance companies on here. You won't see, you know, chiropractors on here. You won't... there's some things that just aren't there because, A, it's a small piece, uh, and B, it's really geared towards those people that are in town for events and just need to know what's here.
Food and drink.
So, we're... we're gonna do that, and we're gonna have an interactive map on the website, so there's... I mean, there's... there's, uh, we're gonna take this and build on it and go from there, so, um, that's... that's been a terrific piece, I think, so, um, and, um, we'll... I'm sure we'll be doing another mailer. So, for 2019, we wanna build on all this. Uh, we really wanna ramp up the website, make that more interactive, more, uh, active blogging and... and articles, and keep people engaged on the website as well. Um, so that's kind of our marketing side. On the event side, of course, we're the sponsors of two events in Chaska, the Block Party, um, as well as, um, Hometown Holiday. Uh, and then, we support pretty much all the other events in... in whatever ways that we can, uh, not least of which is through promotion, 'cause we... we have pretty good reach and we get to a lot of people, but also in terms of having a booth and... and sharing information about what's happening downtown at these booths and, um, and sponsorships and all kinds of things. So, we... we support all of those. Uh, we've also started this year with, um, some business marketing education for the downtown businesses. A business that you may or may not be familiar with that's in Chaska is called Orange Ball Creative, and, um, they've done some marketing, social media marketing, uh, classes for the business owners that we have sponsored. And, um, those have been extremely well-received, and we're gonna continue to do those and add some more of those, so...
I can say the city as an organization has benefited from those also, 'cause Kevin Wright has been attending, um, his training. So, and Orange Ball's located in the, uh, Chaska Mill Building, so they're a tenant there.
Oh.
Looking ahead to-
The Chaska Mill Building, or size, yeah.
Oh, no, in the mill, okay.
Looking ahead to 2019, we've got the LPGA coming, and we, um, have already had initial conversations with those people, and we wanna get things going there. It's not gonna be the same scale as the Ryder Cup, but I think there's still gonna be some great opportunities, and the LPGA is... is, uh, in the position of having to market tickets rather than allocate tickets, so they're... they're really willing to get engaged in... in things, so, uh, we're excited about that. Uh, and then we wanna do again more with the Orange Ball social media bootcamps for the business owners, 'cause, uh, I think that's a terrific, uh, benefit to the people that are paying for the Special Services District, so... On the business recruitment and retention side, um, we've, of course, partnered with the city on the City Square West project in terms of, you know, providing input, um-
Yep.
And, um, we've been, uh, using our website actually to list, uh, space for lease as another resource for people, you know, building, business, building owners- you know, building, business, building owners, property owners that have commercial space for lease, that's another place people can find information about that. And we're trying to provide tools for the, the business owners to, to get information they need about how to get things done through the city with the sign program and so on and so forth, so... We've also supported the sign grant program with, financially, and we're looking to continue that as well as some business activation programs, you know, with this Max Music Hand Group, and they have a tremendous wealth of ideas for activating spaces. Well, that's an area where we think as a downtown Special Services District, we can spend some money and help our businesses and draw customers in, and, and I think there's a lot of potential there, so we've done some initial brainstorming, the specifics of that are yet to be determined, but that's another area that we've looked to make a contribution of the downtown, so... So that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that in a nutshell is what we've been up to and what we're planning.
Why don't you give out a little bit on Hometown Holiday, seems that's the next big event coming up.
Uh, yes, that is December 1st at noon in City Square Park, and I don't have much in the way of specifics on that with me, but that's...
Well, I think you can probably shoot off the cuff, I mean, it's the carriage ride, salmon in the park, there's craft activities in the park, all the businesses are open, have all kinds of specials and...
Yeah, the businesses will all have specials, um, it's, uh...
It's, uh, it's actually a really fun day, and we've generally had, I mean, we've had some hallmark picture-perfect snowy days, so some pretty cold days. The fire department, speaking of that, fire department comes down, has a bonfire going for people...
Hot apple cider and things.
And then the, and following, the tree lighting at 5:00 is the live nativity that St. John's Church group puts on, which is awesome. So there's, it's really an all, all-day event, really, for things to do.
And I think new, new this year, in addition to Santa being available to provide your wish list to, is also going to be Elsa, I think, the...
Yes.
The Disney princess from Frozen, so that's very important to the young girls out there.
Yes.
There we go.
Especially the ones at my house, yeah.
I saw that, how happy those little girls are gonna be. Brooklyn, Brooklyn will love it.
You got any questions for Dan? I, I know that, I think that, like I said, I kind of started talking about it since the inception, three or four years ago, I think that we've seen, and I believe you guys seen what you've been looking for, is an increase every year, a little bit more every year, something new every year, and it just seems, just when you think we can't come up with nothing new, there's something like this.
Yeah.
Orange Ball, was it, was it Orange Ball? No.
Orange Ball Creative, yeah.
Orange Ball.
And the problem we had for many years as a Downtown Business Alliance, we had lots of ideas and no resources.
Right.
And this Special Services District has given us, you know, we have skin in the game here, but it's given us the tools to really go out and make some of this stuff happen.
Your administrator's name is?
Jen Angel, and, and she's been, she's the boots on the ground that, that are doing, that are making a lot of this happen, and it's been fantastic.
And you really can track a difference, there is a difference. I've seen it increase and more traffic and more foot traffic, more events down there.
Yes, and, yeah, we absolutely can see that.
So you're building on your success.
Yes.
I mean, this past Saturday, it's pretty amazing when you have people lined up on Main Street to get into businesses.
Yes.
That is starting to tell you that there's, that this is starting to become that destination place that we've always hoped for, and, and, you know, that doesn't come naturally, it comes through a lot of people's hard work and efforts and, and businesses that believe in what's happening.
There's another aspect to that I would add, is I, I think Chaska is really blessed to have a city council and a city staff and a business community that get along.
Very much so.
Honestly, I mean, that's not a given in many, many cities, and, and that has been a huge advantage for us in making this happen, so thank you to all of you for your part in that, so...
I'm just happy to see it, Sean.
Also want to note how important the SSD's participation in the sign grant program has been. That was a program that the city had established a number of years back through some grant dollars that it had received, and the dollars, as we were helping people put signs on their buildings, were being spent, and we were starting to think about what's the long-term sustainability of that program. And last year was the first year that the SSD got involved in contributing some of its dollars to help support that program, and it has really been a shot in the arm to allow us to, you know, look into the future and, and be assured or have some level of assurance that that program's gonna continue, which then allows staff to be a little bit more proactive in, in marketing that program. And so, just over the, this past year, Michael Cycles, with Mom and Photography, I'm gonna blink on, there's a, there's a church that's office out of Kevin Norby's office, office building, or by Dunn Brothers, they've put a sign up. The year before, Carver Junk Company, the tattoo shop that's right next to it.
Revive, yeah.
Yep, Revive, we've talked to them about it, they haven't put up a sign yet through that program, but there's been a number of different businesses that have been able to benefit from that program, and really it's, it's the SSD providing those dollars that allows it to continue on, so...
Excellent. Well, things are always formed under partnerships, and I think this has been a good partnership for everyone right now, and that's what's important, and I think the, what we're seeing is just the overall success, and that's all we all hoped for in the very beginning.
Yep. Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, for being here.
Dan.
To make that work. So this is a public hearing?
This is a public hearing, yep.
Now, is it our, is this one that we opened and tabled it?
That's correct.
So I just need to see if there's anyone, do I gotta reopen it then?
No, this is a continuation, so the public hearing is already open, what we'll need to do is see if anyone is here.
I don't need any time then.
Yep, yep, and then we would, if there's anyone that wants to speak, they can, if there's not, then we will close it or after folks have finished, and then there would be a request for you all to approve the resolution.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, first off, any questions up here?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. So we'll go ahead and ask for public comment. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on behalf of, or against, for that matter, the Special Services District downtown? I don't see anyone moving, so I'm gonna last call that, and I'm gonna go ahead and close it at 7:39, and with that...
Did you have something?
Yeah, this is Nikki, the lady who worked volunteers at the Retrievers when they had a...
Oh, we're in the middle of...
Oh, no, sorry.
Yep, so we...
I just had one more question.
Yep, that's fine, but let us finish this out, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Yep.
All right.
That's all right.
No worries.
No problem.
Okay, so, public hearing's closed at 7:39, with that, what's your thoughts?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-135.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Bo to, again, adopt Resolution 2018-135, public assess, or to the imposition of the service charges to the 2019 Chaska Downtown Special Services District. Discussion.
No, it's, you know, just having remembered when this first began with just an idea and a concept, it's so exciting to see it, getting legs and really starting to pay dividends. Wonderful.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, all right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries. All right, now Linda, I, I can come back to you. Thanks, Dan, for being here.
Well, Nikki has been part of, you know, helping to trap cats, all that, um...
Hi.
Hello. This is all new to me, so I know Matt's not here, but what happens next is what...
Okay, so, and Nate, you can kind of help me on this, but we're gonna take this information and kind of put together what, what are our options for doing that, and then that's what we have to do, because anything that's done in visitor presentation, there's no action can be taken, so Matt has to put this together, or Nate, I'm not sure whom, would put this together, and then it would come to us as then as a staff report about next steps, and then we would have to determine what that is, whether we take action or we take no action, or we try to find a solution or something, but, so that would be the next steps.
And then is Linda notified about that, since she submitted the...
Yeah, Matt, Matt or I will be in touch as next steps proceed, so we'll, we'll make sure that you're aware of what, you know, what's going on. I know you, you've been in touch with Matt pretty frequently, working up to this point, so I think the important thing is, is that, you know, you provided information today in a, in a very public and official way, and what we've talked about is that this information will help that staff report and sort of next steps be developed, so we can make a recommendation of the council and, and figure out what that should be.
I did a lot of research for you guys, it'll get easier.
Yeah, and that helps, that helps move the ball for us, too, so it's very helpful, thank you.
And that gives us, you know, we have the copies you gave us, we can look at it a little bit ahead of time and stuff like that, but we just cannot take action on anything that's done through a visitor presentation, so...
And so we met with the Carver County Council, too, and...
Okay.
I just said to start out with Chaska, because that's where the bulk of the found cats issue seems to be, and there are four kittens that need to be live-trapped in Clover Ridge area, so we're putting together a plan for that, and because nothing's in place here yet, I tentatively made an appointment with the Humane Society, November 20th is the soonest I could get in, and I made that last Thursday, Friday, and so now we gotta come up with a plan to live-trap them. Now they could get in colder, it's gonna be harder, because they're going underground.
Oh, yeah.
So they're kittens?
Start hiding.
Is that what you said? Okay. I think we know where the momma, because we keep finding more and more kittens around that same neighborhood all the time.
Oh, just needs to be crazy around Clover Ridge, and another thing to be working on is they're trapping all the feral cats and even non-feral, that people let them roam, and I'm not going on that topic, you know?
Yeah, a trap, neuter, and release program, too, maybe at, at some point.
Yeah, but I've done seven feral cats here, in Chaska, seven or eight, something like that, and one's actually down at a friend's furball farm sanctuary in Fairmont, or not Fair, um...
Furball.
Furball, so I go visit.
It's quite a distance.
I, well, I don't go there much, but thank you, it's been very enlightening.
Like I say, I don't know if it'll be at the next council meeting, it might not be till December.
We'll, we'll keep you posted.
But you'll get notified.
Just hopefully we can find some solution, because this gets crazy and a lot for one person here to try to figure out, you know?
Right.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks to both of you. Well, now that Ms. Jen is here, I'd like to have Jen come up, she doesn't ever come up here in short faith.
Yeah.
So Jen, why don't you just come on up, and for people at home, this is, this is Jen Angel that we were talking about, she's with the Special Service District, she's the, is your title administrator?
Yes.
No, I got it right, okay.
Yes.
So just say something, your turn to beat red, stop it.
Um, I know, I ran, I was at church, and I ran from St. John's. It's, uh, it's very cool outside, but then you come inside, and you're like...
It's refreshing outside, yeah.
Um, you know, I think that, the, the thing that I'd like to say about what we're doing with the SSD is just how amazing the community is, and to be able to have this little extra focus around building, that continued community support and that business engagement has been phenomenal. It's, there's, you know, and we talk a lot about the events, and we do so much more than just throw events, but when you, when you go to these events and people come up to you and say, like, this is amazing, what, it's so, it's so fun to come downtown and to be a part of what we have downtown, to walk and to meet people and to spend time with your family, and, you know, that's, that's one piece of it, and the, the other piece is to watch our businesses grow, and to watch new businesses come in and, and, you know, the refineries moving from their little space to a bigger one, and that's, that's great to, to see happen, and to see someone like Carver Junk come in and continue to kind of redefine the, the landscape of what we look like down here from a business perspective. I think one of the, the takeaways for me is to continue to engage the businesses outside of the retail side of things. It's very easy to, to get enamored with the restaurants and the bars and the, the clothing stores, but we, we have a big service industry down here, and to be able to tap into those people and help them grow their reach is a, is a 2019 goal for me, so I just, the only thing I would say is thank you for the honor of being able to work with us, because it's, it's been awesome.
Pretty good. Well, thanks, I just, I saw you come in, I thought, we gotta get you up here, I, I don't even, you've been here once or twice, but not very often.
Yeah, you know, I don't have to do anything, because Dan has it all covered, so I'm just like a figurehead.
That's why I didn't think you were gonna get off that easy tonight, so...
Well, I mean, I love talking, so...
Really?
Thank you, guys.
Well, thanks, Jen. All right. In fact, I think we'll move into bills. Any comments? If not, we'll pay the bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Bo, it's pretty easy, I just know where the second is.
That's right.
Uh, to pay the bills, discussion.
Nope.
Hearing none. Nate, we call roll.
Councilmember Bo?
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes.
Move on to other business. Let's start to my right, Councilmember Bo.
Uh, I did want to mention the, tomorrow is the big election day, so just a reminder to everyone to make sure you vote.
That's what I've heard.
Oh.
Really?
Although, I think early voting is way up, but we'll still have a couple that'll be voting yet, so you go, instead of early voting at the courthouse, you'll go to your polling station, which is the usual location, which would be what, the Moravian Church and...
Church on the Hill.
Yep.
Christ Victorious, and the Community Center.
Community Center, there we go. Eighty, oh no, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so I would encourage everyone to vote, and then, secondly, I just wanted to remind everyone about the big event coming up Sunday, November 11th at 2:00 PM at the New Veterans Park, and that'll be a fun, what, ribbon cutting and, and a chance to see the place and have a dedication ceremony that'll...
I don't know if there's ribbon cutting, though.
Isn't there? Oh.
I think it's the ceremony. I don't, I don't know if there's an actual ribbon cutting.
I don't know if anyone's ever talked about ribbon cutting.
Some sort of a dedication ceremony, okay.
Started clicking heels recently at things, so I don't know if that...
Okay, well, it'll be fun, I mean, that's been something that's been in the works and, for some time, and a great partnership with, with the local service organizations all being a part of that whole process for planning that. It's gonna be a fabulous park when it's all said and done, so it'll be fun to see that happen. So hopefully, while it may not be warm, hopefully, as you say, it will be dry.
Worth bundling up for.
Hopefully the sun's out, no wind, then it won't matter.
Exactly, yep, very good.
Will not matter. But just for, there will not be seating, so if you need to sit, please bring a chair, there'll be some seating for any disabled vets or anybody that really needs it, but the seating's limited, so if you think you need it, we have no idea the turnout, what they expect, but please bring a chair if you, if you do need it. Like I said, we're gonna do it, or, I shouldn't say me, the, the vets group and the city will be doing their best about having some chairs. I think they're gonna have about 50 seats available.
Oh, very good.
I think that's what we have for folding chairs, but some will be needed by the honor guards and, and stuff like that, because some of those guys are getting up there as well, so I don't know what we'll have, all said and done, how many seats, so if you're, if that's a concern, I'd bring a seat, and, but I'm, the, the ceremony should be under a half hour.
Okay.
So it's not a long service.
And is it, is it muddy or, or grassy or...
Uh, it, it's all sodded.
Okay.
There is a large area, and so hopefully all the chairs will stay on the concreted star area, and the spectators could back up a little bit for anybody that has a chair.
Very good.
They can stand behind, because they'll be able to see it, so...
Okay.
The best problem we could have is too many people there, and they'd have, we have to back out into the grass, so...
Very good.[1735.65]
Then that would be a great problem.
Absolutely.
Be good for that.
Very good.
It's nice that there's parking in three different places too.
Yeah, parking, if, if you are especially able-bodied and able to walk, we encourage you to, to park at the Fireman's Park. And you can park on a Westerly Edge and there's a trail that walks right over the park. It's, it's sometimes shorter than parking in the furthest part of the VFW, so. But please leave the vets club and especially the parking that's going to be at the Veterans Park for any of the veterans that are elderly that need a little closer proximity parking. So, able-bodied, please use the Fireman's Park.
Very good. And I know already today, just noticed the, the view of the new picnic shelter from, from Fireman's Park and from the parking lot down there, it really looks nice.
Yeah, and the orange fence has gone, the new railing's up, so that's looking good.
And once the flags are raised, those will be very visible too.
Absolutely, very good.
The flags, that is part of the dedication, so all the flags will go up that day.
Wonderful.
So, I'm, that's what I'm more excited about, to see that with the flags all flying there across the way, so. Should be, should be easy to draw to, shouldn't be hard to find.
And then I'm, I believe that we'll have the Veterans Day Ceremony at the schools on Monday then, is that correct?
Yes, and that starts now at...
8:40, was it?
Later start than you...
They start school later, so it's like 8:30 or 8:40, yes.
I think they said flag raising at 8:40.
Okay. Good.
Yep, I'm going to go inside and I'll...
So, it won't be quite as cold at that 21 Gun Salute as it has been in the past. Okay, good enough. Thank you, and that's all I have, thanks.
I didn't have anything but the veterans' dedication. I'm just so looking forward to it. I've been taking photos as it's being, as it's been constructed. And it's absolutely beautiful. It's everything I hoped it would be. As the mom of two veterans and lifetime family members of veterans, I'm just so happy to see Chaska finally have an actual veterans' park.
Absolutely.
Just makes my day. So, very happy and can, I'm so looking forward to it. And I'm anxious to see the response from the veterans. Because it's something they've really wanted for a long time and they deserve it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can't wait.
Very good.
That's all I have.
All right, need anything?
I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. You guys are hanging around?
Yes.
Young man, what are you here for?
Well, you got to come up and tell us all about it. That's the only way you get credit for being here, so.
Trying to get to Notre Dame.
Hey, I recognize you, you're Mr. Bo, right?
Yes, that is correct.
I think I attend your parish, right? Do you go to Guardian Angels?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
All right, I'm a Richardson.
Oh, very, oh, yes, absolutely.
I'm Joey.
Nice to see you.
I go there too.
I think we visited in your yard, didn't we?
Saturday morning, Sunday morning, I mean, every morning.
Sunday morning, all right.
I think, yeah, we visited in your yard, I think, recently too, maybe, okay.
Yes, yes.
So, why are you here?
So, I'm here for my American Government and Politics class at Holy Family High School.
Very good.
Every semester, we are required to do four hours of civic participation, either in, for example, this council, city council meeting, court hearings. You can ride along with the sheriff, anything to do with government or politics. So, I chose, this is my first kind of segment of doing it. So, about, this will be like an hour, an hour and a half, city council meeting. And I'll probably attend more of these or around the area, like Victoria or Chainhassen. So, what I did is I printed out the agenda for today and I'm just jotting down notes
Very good.
on the different segments that you've guys been doing, so.
So, you're saying you're disappointed that we were too fast and we should have made it go along?
No, 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 no problem. It's awesome.
I say, you sure picked the good one.
Yeah.
This is one of the shortest meetings we've had in a long time. But you can see, it's pretty empty up here.
Well, very good. Pleasure to see you again.
Yeah, pleasure to see you guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you need anything signed by us?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Well, we'll be done here in a couple minutes, so come on up after. All right, the only thing that I have is, and you know, we talked about the Veterans Park, is a couple of things. We had the, what do we call the thing down at Fire, Athletic Park?
Oh, the, the Russian Yard Race Cleanup Thing you talked about?
No, 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 no.
Trail of Fun?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Jack-o'-lantern Trail of Fun.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was another fabulous event put on by Chaska Park and Rec and Carver County Park. We partner on that one. And it's getting to be so big, they keep adding activities and it's just kind of filling up Athletic Park. So, thanks to all those, I mean, we've been fortunate, we've had good weather, we haven't had a rainy, haven't had, really had a cold one. It is amazing how, how far people are parked away to come to that, so. But another great event that's put on by, by staff in, in Carver Park. So, thanks to all those. And really, last, all I have is, is tomorrow's voting day. And I just strongly encourage, if you haven't voted, which most people I've talked to have voted already, that you please get out and vote. I, I, it doesn't matter to me who, what party, whatever, it's just to get out and vote and to make sure that you get out and do that. And then what I'd like to say is, especially for the city elections, is to say, thanks to all the people that have put their name out there. It takes a lot to put your name out and to run for a position. You get put out in spotlight, not like the big, the big party people. But you are put in the spotlight, you are looked at differently and you get asked questions no matter where you go. So, I want to say thank you to everyone that has taken the time and effort to do that. That's greatly appreciated. And by, by the people doing that, that's what makes the city run the way it does. I mean, it's, we have people willing to do that. It's, it's, it's good to get competition, although sometimes we don't like it. It's always good to have competitions. It's important, makes you work harder, makes you think of things differently. So, it's, it's, it is really important. And the other thing is, is my last council member, Row, had to step down, he moved out of his ward. We have four people that stepped up and put their name in for that. And we will have interviews at our next council meeting on the 19th, is that right?
That's right.
The 19th, so, and we will be doing appointment probably that night. So, we will, we will have interviews prior to the meeting and have a discussion time. And then that appointment will come out that night. So, thank you to, to the four people that have stepped up and put their name in there. So, we really, all in all, we have like, what did we have up here? Nine? And then those four, so we had like 13 people put their name forward for this election. That's a lot in a city election, in a city our size. So, thank you to everyone that's done that. Don't quit, if you don't make it, don't quit. There's, there's, there's another time and it won't be too far away. A lot of, you'd be surprised how fast the time changes and...
Look at some of our commissions too.
Yeah, and, and if there's other opportunities, come January, we make our appointments, do commissions. You'll see that there'll be, we're looking for positions. I, I don't know this year, but I, I'm just certain by turnover that we'll have a, a number of positions that will be open again this, this year. And please put your name in. Again, that's one of the, some of the things that make Chaska so strong is that people are willing to do that, so.
And on that subject, do we advertise in January and then take applications in February? I can't recall what the timeline is.
No, we do it right away. We just put out, I think, we're interviewing in January, I think.
Yeah. So, do we advertise in December or do we start that in January?
That's what we have been doing, is we'll, we'll advertise in December and we need to try and make those appointments as quickly as we can at the turn of the year.
Very good.
Yeah, because I know that we have some that will fall off because we have a nine-year term limit, unlike other things. There is term limits on our commission, so after nine years, people have to, I don't know if it's retire or they just, they can't be reappointed after nine years, whatever.
They need to take at least a... Three, three-year terms, yep.
And...
They can take a term off and come back.
That's right. So, all of our terms are three-year terms and so you get three, three, three-year terms, so.
Very good.
All right. Anything else we can think of?
You know, I, I did happen to notice there was some talk about the, with City of Chaska and the Bicycle Alliance. And there's a meeting coming up for that, isn't there?
Yes. I blank on the date, do you have that date in front of you? It's...
I don't, but it's coming up soon.
Thursday, I believe.
Me and the rightable community.
Yeah.
November 8th.
November 8th, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
So, this week?
Wish you came to every meeting. Yeah, November 8th. And there is, there is a sort of a two-part piece of that. During the day, there's going to be some meetings going on with stakeholders, you know, staff of the city, people who work for agencies that may have an interest in bicycling. And there's going to be a bike ride that'll take place after that, for folks who want to get out and do a little bit of a tour of the trail. And then in the evening, there will be an open house meeting for people, just in the general public, to attend if they're interested. And the, the point of that is we're, we're going through an exercise to determine whether the City of Chaska could achieve some level of designation as a bicycle-friendly city. I think there's bronze, silver, gold and diamond or platinum or something like that, levels.
Okay.
Our, our, I guess our thought going into this is if we achieve anything, it's most likely bronze.
Okay.
But out of it, we would learn, you know, what are things that we can do to invest in the system that we have? Maybe it's new connections or wayfinding or...
I was going to ask about status of wayfinding.
Bike lanes in certain locations or, you know, whatever it might be. We'll get some suggestions of things that could be implemented to either achieve that bronze if we, if we aren't quite there or to bring it to that next level, if we are bronze indeed. Maybe we'll surprise ourselves, maybe we're something more than that too.
Very good. Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
So, thanks for letting me jump in, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, absolutely. Anything else? Where did I read that? I remember reading that, but I, I don't...
It's out in the park board minutes.
Oh, that's what reminded me of it. Yeah, I just...
We've been promoting it on our Facebook page, I know that too.
It's on your life in Chaska.
Yeah, and on our website, so there's information available.
Oh, and we didn't really talk about, we have a speaking park, the dog park opened up.
Yes.
So, that's another thing that's been a long time coming, kind of like the Veterans Park that we've talked about. And I kind of talked about it at the opening is that dog parks are like some other things that, you know, everybody thinks are a great idea to build it next to my house. So, it's, it's always a challenge that we find the right location that everybody can come out of there and be supportive of it. And I, I think that we really have found that site. I mean, we're, we only have half of it open at this point. And chances of the other half opening this fall are probably slim and less as, as weather's changing on us fast. But I think by, by next year, early summer for sure, if not late spring,